Bob Sable.
Mike Parks is here for Chuck Schaefer and Lieutenant Colonel Spargers here for Chief Clay. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder, these meetings are being taped and for the aldermen and for the, any visitors who do get recognized to come to the microphone for public participation, please speak into the microphone and clearly because we want to make sure everything's picked up. Couple comments about disaster procedures. If for some reason we would have to leave this room, for example, if there was storm warnings came out, the police office would help guide us down the hallway, across the lobby, down the steps to the basement where it's designated as a safe storm shelter. If we had to leave for fire purposes, we'd ask that you carefully and quietly go out the front door, be careful crossing the street, and we'd like to get everybody together over by the St. Clair County sign in front of the courthouse so we can kind of look around us and make sure that everybody we were sitting next to, that we believe the people we came with are all accounted for, for the emergency personnel. So that takes care of those matters. At this time tonight, the first thing we have on the agenda is a public hearing, and I'd like to officially open the public hearing. And the purpose of the public hearing is to take comment and answer questions if possible, but to receive any comments. And this is a reference of a right-of-way vacation at Union Avenue and Huff Avenue, and the purpose is to consider approval of right-of-way vacation requests for that location. This is, if you're, if you're at the intersection of State Street and Roosevelt School, and you proceed west, that becomes, that little stretch becomes Huff Avenue until it runs into, at the curve, Union Avenue. And what is being requested is that this is being vacation because, Anissa, I believe I'm correct, The Edge, Laser Rock, has already purchased or has an option on one home and is looking at another home for future growth.
They've purchased two in the immediate area, but definitely on, one on the corner and one right there.
So the one for sure is the brick home on the corner that was formerly one of the Wessel family's homes that, when it was Wessel's Market. Then as you go around the corner, the first home on the, it would be the east side of Union Avenue. They're planning, and they have met with neighbors, they have been to the zoning board. This is a formality that we must do tonight. They are planning some expansion again at The Edge and Laser Rock, and they've met with the school, and they've met with all the neighbors about cul-de-sacking that street. When you come down Union Avenue from Blair or from, from Central Avenue coming towards Laser Rock, the street would dead-end then into a cul-de-sack. We've also met with police and fire representatives, School District 118, and the neighbors. And at this point, I think it's fair to say, Anissa, everybody's signed off. So, is there anyone this evening that's here to speak for or against this public hearing regarding the vacationing of right-of-way of that area I just explained? If no one has any questions, council members, is there any further questions from any of you? I know we've had it at zoning. It will not come up for a vote until June 6th, right, Anissa, we said? Yeah, it'll be on the, it'll be on the agenda June 6th. We couldn't get all the final, on Thursday or Friday, we couldn't get all the final details ready, but I didn't have a problem with having the public hearing and making sure that it got one more chance to be heard. So at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing with no comment, and you can look forward to seeing some action on that item I just talked about at the meeting on, the first meeting of June, June 6th. Okay, we now move on to public participation. This evening, I will call on you. When I do call on you, you come to the microphone, please state your name. Try to keep your comments to two to three minutes, and try to keep your comments to Belleville business or particularly if possible, we, we'd like to see it based on the business that's on the agenda at hand. So does anybody this evening like to make any comments? Front, front row, you can go first.
Michael Hagberg. Just wanted to say that I had made comments before about TIF 10 and a possible missed payment, and the payments have all been made. I just missed the claim sheet that had that payment on it. Thank you.
Who's next? Yes, sir.
My name's Hal, I'm an abbot. I live at 750 Port Henry Road in Belleville, on the east end. I've been coming to meetings here for about the last year and a half, on and off, not every meeting, and I've watched a lot of things, so I have just a short statement. This is, all of you elected officials, the 16 aldermen and the mayor, and some other elected officials, but the ones that vote, you, you volunteer for election. You volunteer to serve the people. And in my period of coming here, I, I don't see that. I see a lot of you being servants of the Keller family, Lindenwood Companies, developers, whatever shows up here. You're elected to serve the people, you asked to serve the people. And you need to know the people, everybody on this side, we're the people. We're in charge, not you. And your job is to provide police protection, fire protection, and infrastructure. And, you know, you're not elected to provide tax breaks for everybody that shows up at City Hall. Because these tax breaks that people are giving, TIFs, abatements, rebates, they drive our taxes up. And I don't care what the math is, I'm a college-educated guy, I can add and subtract, and I guarantee you they do. So, you know, and if you think that a disabled veteran who gets a tax break on property taxes is the reason that property taxes go up, then you're living in another world, you know? The real world is property taxes are higher because of the millions of dollars, millions that we give, this city has given away in tax breaks to every Tom, Dick, and Harry that shows up at City Council with his hand out. And we're going to do that tonight, or start the process for 6401 West Main. And then you may say, well, you know, you're against development, you know, and I'm not. I, I think development, and I think growing, and I look for that kind of stuff. But what I'm against is corporate welfare, you know? I don't know why we have to give them our tax money and not to pay more taxes to a profitable company, to a profitable developer, to a profitable whatever, a profitable nonprofit. So I'm not against development, I'm not against Lindenwood, and I'm not against education and colleges. I think Lindenwood coming here was fantastic, but some of the things we have given them are just insane. So the bottom line is, Mr. Mayor and City Council, I believe you all's business is to provide police protection, fire protection, and infrastructure to this city. And it should be superb in all things, and use our tax money efficiently, proficiently, and fiscally responsible, and spend it that way. And I don't see that in my neighborhood. My neighborhood has 35 to 40-year-old streets and they're falling apart. I've had three burglaries, household burglaries in my neighborhood in the last three months during the day. So I'm not so sure about where the money's going. So, from a couple of college students just recently that I looked at, for you council members, and for most of you, and for the city, mind your own business or leave.
Who would like to go next? Yes, ma'am.
Diane Rogie. Approximately one year ago, myself and several other Belleville residents came before this council and asked for help because our neighborhoods were being infiltrated by Lindenwood University Housing. Knowing that our quality of life in our neighborhoods would be changed forever, we asked only that a study be conducted to identify what impact this change would have on our property values. We were denied. In the last two weeks, I have spoken with the appraisers and have answered that question regarding our property. The answer was quite devastating. In a city where the mayor proclaims the property values are going up, 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 I can tell you for certain that on West A Street, the values are going down, down, down for the tax-paying citizens. The appraisers both told me that the number one reason for the loss of value is the change of use for some properties, but not all. Our property is still a family home and must be appraised as such. We are currently surrounded by homes that once were family homes, but now are designated as student dwellings. They can no longer be appraised as family homes. They really have no grouping for appraisal purposes. They are not apartment buildings, but contain numerous unrelated adults. They are not commercial, but have constant security lighting, constant student movement, day and night, and vehicle traffic. One appraiser compared it to picking our home up and setting it completely, in a completely different setting, and then trying to appraise it as using the same guidelines used in 2011. For those of you who think this does not affect you because you live on the other side of town, think again. Our family home can still be used as a comparison for your home on the other side of town, bringing your values down. Before the city and this council allow any more residents to lose value in their home while a university continues to make profits, I once again ask you to require an impact study to see what effects this drastic change will have on unsuspecting residents. You owe it to the residents of this city to protect their largest investment of their life, their home.
Who'd like to go next? Mr. Betts?
Larry Betts, representing the Belleville Historical Society. Several months ago, I made a presentation to this body making a plea to save the front half of the abstract and title building immediately to the west of the City Hall. I was told that it had to be demolished to accommodate plans to make the City Hall ADA compliant, and that the architects had already developed those plans and it would be too costly to change. I would ask if the demo cost saved by leaving the front part of the building intact would offset the costs of revised planning and therefore have the best of both worlds. I was questioned as to what the building could be used for. I have had conversations with the St. Clair County Genealogical Society, and they indicated they would greatly welcome that site as a home. The city has been involved in providing venues for the Labor and Industry Museum and the Kerner House. Why not the Genealogical Society? The abstract and title company building is a true work of art and does not deserve to wind up in a landfill. Until it is actually demolished, it's not too late to alter plans and save it. Also during that presentation, I asked that during the renovation of City Hall, you strongly consider following the spirit of the original architect, Charles King, in changes that are made. At that meeting, Mayor Eckert indicated that our organization would be involved in the planning meetings. I understand design planning is underway, but as of yet, we have not been contacted nor involved. Within the Belleville Historical Society, we have three people that are well-versed in the design principles of Charles King and his architecture, and feel that we could have a very positive influence on that design process. I have mentioned before to this group that in the opinion of the Director of the Illinois Historic Preservation Commission, this building represents the best example of mid-century modern architecture in a civic building in the entire Midwest. It deserves to be treated accordingly. Can I change hats? Do you want me to talk about the Walk of Fame inductees at this time or later?
It's on the agenda. Does anybody, any of the aldermen have any questions at this time about the item on the agenda, about the Walk of Fame? No one called, I think we'll be okay? Okay? Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Start Lanner, 29, create 18 South 29th Street.
Mr. Lanner, it's very hard to hear you, can you speak into the microphone?
I'm just wondering, why do the taxpayers have to pay Lindenwood $150,000 a year? I've never got an answer to that. And they've been paying that ever since 2003, I don't know when it'll ever end. And 50 of the Lindenwood houses they bought no longer have to pay property tax. And Lindenwood got free land from the 29th Street railroad tracks to the first house, and part of it they made into a parking lot. The other, they claim is owned by Lindenwood University Corporation. Now, I don't know what that's supposed to mean, but that's what it says on the map I got from the courthouse. Not much info about giving Lindenwood 12 acres in West Belleville. I don't know what the deal on that was, it's pretty hushed up evidently. And I was talking to some guy at a tavern the other couple of weeks ago, a student there, and he said Lindenwood is more of a, it seems more like a sports complex than a university. They got everything from ping pong to, you name it, as sports, and they get scholarships. And my lawyer told me one time, he thinks Lindenwood is just trying to cram as many students as possible into these, into that school. And then when they graduate, they're going to be, have one heck of a school debt. And I know two students that graduated from there. One guy got a job as a bartender, and I said, is that the best you could do if graduating? Oh, this is a good job. Well, I don't know, he goes, he tends bar where all the college students go, and they're notoriously poor tippers, so where he gets his money, I don't know, to think that's a good job. And another girl was a bartender in another tavern.
Okay, start.
I'm not done yet, I've got a few more things.
You've got a little bit of time yet, sir.
Lindenwood knew Belleville was so desperate to give school away, they let Lindenwood disregard Belleville codes and regulations. They just come in here and done anything they felt like doing, and it was up to lump it or like it as far as they was concerned, they were going to do whatever they want. And this fence Lindenwood, I think if they want to fence around this pump station, they should pay for it. And also one day, Lindenwood filed a false police report against me. They said I was trespassing, and they said they had me on tape, and Lin, Angela Wengos told me to leave the property, which is, both things were totally untrue. But I had to pay, go down to, two of the Belleville police come to my house, and I had to go down to the police station and post a $150 bond. And then Lindenwood, I guess they knew they didn't have a case because they didn't have me on tape, and Angela never even seen me that day. So they wanted to bury the hatchet and drop the case. So, all I got was $135 back because the court takes 15. So I called Lindenwood, I said, you know, you owe me $15. Well, they said, so they, next day they put 15, $20 in my mailbox and a box of candy. I should have got them for false arrest, but I, I didn't. I'll give them a break, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no other, seeing no other hands, yes, sir.
My name is Larry Hammond, I live at 518 North 6. I'm for Lindenwood, I don't care what anybody says, I'm for Lindenwood. And we had a good art on the square this weekend, I just want to make that statement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Hearing none of closed public participation, so we can get into the heart of the meeting here. At this time, we're going to go into presentations and appointments. The first thing we have, I'm going to ask Mr. Gene Narber to come forward. A presentation by Economic Development Resources on eligibility study for 6401 West Main Street, Marketplace Business District. Mr. Narber?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a map of the area that we had been asked to analyze. Main Street is the major road on the, essentially at the bottom of the map. Here is North 66th Street, which is a public thoroughfare, and North 64th Street, which is actually part of this entire one parcel that is the subject of our analysis. In addition, we included in the area that portion of North 66th Street immediately abutting the parcel, and the portion of West Main Street immediately abutting this parcel. So we have one parcel in abutting right-of-ways of approximately six acres. This is the side of the former, in particular, Mad Price or Grocery Store, most recently the $20 shoe store. This shopping center is close to 70% vacant and has been so for a number of years. EDR staff has been on-site a number of times to take a look at the conditions of both the buildings, the site improvements, and the roadways. We've been accompanied by the staff from the cities, or by, in fact, the city building inspector, the electrical inspector, members of the city fire department, as well as members of the economic development, planning, and zoning departments. I'd like to thank all of them for their very professional assistance in helping us gather the data so that we could make our determination that this area does in fact meet the one qualifying standard found in the business district development and redevelopment law. That is, that this area under the law is blighted. Our analysis is contained in the report that you have, and appears on pages two through six. And our analysis of this area has determined that the factors of inadequate street layout, unsanitary or unsafe conditions, deterioration of site improvements, improper subdivision or obsolete planning, and conditions which endanger life or property by fire or other causes are all identifiable within both the buildings and the site of this one parcel. Having made that determination, our conclusion, which appears and is discussed in depth on page seven of the report, that this area is an economic liability, and let me address that in particular. The equalized assessed value of this area from which all taxing districts generate property tax revenue is fallen by more than 60% since 2010. If development here is affected and or redevelopment occurs, the equalized assessed value is likely to go into the all underlying taxing districts. The business district program has nothing to do with property tax. The business district program, if the city desires to move forward, will levy an additional sales tax of up to 1% in this blighted area to be used for the development and redevelopment of this blighted area. Monies won't be spent in other districts, won't be spent outside. The monies will be used to develop and redevelop this area, again, likely increasing a significantly declining tax base that affects all taxing districts. In addition, the area is a social liability. The factors in their combination have led to an economic underutilization of the area, and the area is a menace to public health, safety, and welfare. And again, that conclusion is reached from our analysis of the factors that we have identified in a number of different fieldwork days actually spent on-site and review of various valuations, pardon me, made by the county and recorded in the county. So, what we are asking then is that the city accept the study demonstrating the eligibility of this area and place it on file. And then if you so choose to resolve, to move forward, by retaining us to then complete the study and the development plan. The area qualifies as eligible. What we need to have, and we do have interest from the private side, is a redevelopment plan that will demonstrate how any revenues generated within this area from that additional sales tax will be used to develop and or redevelop this area.
Members of the council, do you have any questions for Mr. Narber? We've had this in committee already, we've had some discussions. I think everybody's pretty familiar with the site, and I think everybody would agree the site is very, showing a lot of wear. So this is the next step we have to have. There are two motions on this agenda, under 11B, and we'll be coming back to it then, and we thank you, Mr. Narber.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we move on now, I have an appointment. Next meeting, I'll probably have, yes, sir?
I just got a call.
Yeah, let's go ahead.
You said that there was private developer interest.
Yes, sir.
Who's going to do the plans, and you are going to do them?
Well, we're asking that you authorize the back half of our contract and have us do the plan.
Well, are they going to, I mean, is a private interest going to have any input into that?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thanks.
And we haven't yet, the RFP, is it closed, Eric? What is it? So the next few days ahead, the request for proposals on this property will close. We've got one?
We've had any official, we've had a question with one developer, but no official proposal yet. And it was in the, in the request for proposals that any, the developer that's chosen will, will have to compensate the city for.
Right. We understand that, and also though, as Mr. Narber said, once we choose a developer, they will work with you and Economic Development Department as we move forward. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
So there's one, there's one developer so far?
There's one developer that showed an interest so far.
Okay.
And I, as we explained to you before, we probably, if we wouldn't have had what we felt was at least somewhat interested, we have to go out for proposals by the statute, by the law.
Right.
But we would have probably never, we wouldn't have moved it forward at this exact moment had there not been any interest. There is some interest, but that we had to open it up fairly to any and all who might be interested.
I guess I'm not, shouldn't the person coming to the, the developer coming do the plan for the development rather than him?
No, we hired him to find out if the eligible, if the area is eligible. Actually, it would be a little unfair until, it would be acting like we tipped our hand to make a final decision on who's going to get it until this study's adopted and until the time runs out for the RFP.
Okay, well, he's done that, right?
Well, we're going to vote on it tonight.
Okay, so we vote on that, then what's the second part?
Well, the second part is, is that, Gene, you want to explain the second part?
There are certain requirements to create a business district. One is to have an analysis of eligibility, and the other is to have a business district development and or redevelopment plan. There's certain items that you have to provide in the plan. You have to be able to demonstrate in the plan that you have an area that qualifies, that you have objectives to pursue, that you have a budget, which involves discussion both from public actors and the private developer, if there is one selected to move forward. There's certain findings that need to be made, and certain ordinances that eventually have to be passed. We do that plan document, and we provide draft ordinances for review by the city's legal council. The development or redevelopment plans in business districts are those documents that we've worked with the city and private developers for, with, pardon me, for a number of years. We are well-positioned to represent the city's interests in that plan, and also well-positioned to work with the private side so that the deal that the city strikes can be memorialized in the plan. And the plan can also contain those goals and objectives, policies, and activities. And the plan can also contain those goals and objectives, policies, and activities that the city wants to see in the plan document.
So it's nothing, it's nothing specific to the development, it's just some sort of statutory requirement?
No, there, as I said, we will be working with the developer. We have to have a budget, and we have to have activities, we have to have plans and projects, and those will be identified when we hear what the developer's response, in fact, is. All of that will be contained in the business district plan.
Mr. Consilla?
I think some confusion here is when we use the word "plan."
Right.
There are actually three different steps. Number one, we have to find out if it's eligible to make a business district out of it.
Right.
Then we have to make a plan for the business district. It does not plan what is going where. It just says how we're going to make the business district. The individual who is finally chosen will make his own plans. I wanna build this here and that there, and I'm gonna put roads here. That's the plan that we typically think of. But when we're using the term "plan" tonight, we're using a term that means we're getting the business district set up, but we're not planning what goes there. Does that help?
Well, he just said, though, that the second part of the plan and the developer's plan are gonna be incorporated. Is that, is that right?
No, ultimately, that's correct. It'll get to that point.
So the second, the second part of what we will eventually vote on?
Well, what you're saying, the second point, I think Ken's saying it's the third part, and just, I think it's...
Well, I'm just saying they're combined.
Right, right. It gets to that point where they're combined.
Okay.
Yeah, we agree. Let me, let me just say this, add this. We've been trying to redevelop sixty-four oh one probably the entire time I've been mayor, which is a number of years. And we've never gotten to the point where we had enough interest or strong conversation or thought there was a willingness to really move forward. So we never explored the business district blightedness and everything, even though we felt like it would qualify. But this time, we've got some in-depth conversation with this person many, many times, and we felt like there was a sincere desire to lift that whole shopping center up that has been deteriorating. So we feel like we're at a point now that, that's why we came to you, that's why we made the choice to hire Mr. Narber, but we feel like we're at a point now where we're truly making some real progress to turn that, that area, which I think we would agree is pretty blighted, turn it around drastically.
I just wanted some clarification.
Yeah.
I'm against it.
Yeah. So this is the first time we've gotten this far, and there's been many of attempts. I can tell you, I know of half dozen at least. Anybody else with questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Narber. At this time, there's one committee I'm asking to reappoint some members tonight. I will tell you, it's my intention, we usually always do this in May. It's been a very, very busy couple of weeks, and this past week, getting ready for Ardena Square, we ran out of time to make phone calls. But I do have the, I'm asking for a motion to approve reappointment of Mary Carbon, Carol Keely, and Victoria Wygon, each for a three-year term, to the library board.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Silsby, second by Alderman Seibert, and is there discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. We move now to the approval of the minutes, council meeting minutes, May second, two thousand sixteen. What's your pleasure? Alderman Wigington? Move to accept and file? We have a motion, second by Alderman Ovian. Is there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting and filing the minutes from May second signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have the claims, payroll, and disbursements. I'd ask for a motion to approve the claims and disbursements in the amount of two million nine hundred sixty-nine thousand one thirty-four and seventy-four cents, and the payroll of eight hundred sixty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty cents. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Elmore, second by Alderman Anthony. Do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have some zoning board of appeals recommendations. Would you please, when I read those couple?
Sure. Eleven A one, case fourteen, April sixteen, Todd Kennedy, request for a special use permit to utilize a vacant lot adjacent to forty-two oh four Main Street Brewing Company for outdoor restaurant and dining establishment uses at forty-two hundred West Main Street, located in a C two heavy commercial zoning district.
Do we have any problem reading these three together?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's go ahead and proceed, please.
Eleven A two, case sixteen, April sixteen, Jeff Hamel, a request for a sign installation for area of special control in order to place a thirteen and a half by thirty-six brushed aluminum polymetal sign at twenty-three South First Street, located in a C two heavy commercial zoning district. Eleven A three, case seventeen, April sixteen, Marvin in Alvina Pruitt, a request for a special use permit in order to build a metal building over one hundred and fifty square feet at one thousand two South Charles Street, located in a one single-family residence district.
Alderman Seibert, motion to approve those and have the proper ordinances drawn?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Seibert, second by Diddleman. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes?
I'm supposing that they include the zoning's recommendations, because we had two of them with recommendations for zoning.
Yes, I think you make a very valid point. Is that, did you all read those, and you have no problem with accepting the recommendations that came out of zoning? That's in your packet, okay? Everybody agrees with that? All in favor of the motion to have the proper ordinance drawn, recognizing those comments that came from the zoning board of appeals. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We move on. Economic Development and Planning Committee, Alderman Consilla. And I don't know, we have about four or five, we have four items. Are any of those wished to be separated out, or how's your, what's your pleasure?
B three.
Take B three out.
Let's read the rest together.
What's that?
Let's read the rest together.
Okay, I'm with you. Mr. Consilla, go ahead.
Eleven B one, I make a motion to accept the eligibility study for the sixty-four oh one West Main Street Marketplace Business District and place it on file, making it available for public inspection. Eleven B two, I make a motion authorizing EDR to complete the sixty-four oh one West Main Street Marketplace Business District Plan. And eleven B four, I make a motion to approve an amended development plan agreement with Reunion LLC.
The only thing I'd like to add to his motion, Mr. Consilla, if you would agree, on that last one, eleven B four with Reunion, I'd like to make sure that it's noted in the motion that the following six lots are exempted from this approval. Lot number fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-four, fifty-six, sixty, and eighty. That was, there's approximately started out with seventy-seven lots, Chris?
Seventy-six, yes.
Seventy-six, and this would exempt these six. The neighbors, the association, and the developer are going to work out, as they get going towards the end of this project, work out some recommendations for those six possible changes. So these would be exempt, okay? Everybody understand that? So we have three motions here coming from Economic Development. We have...
We need a second.
We have a motion by Alderman Consilla, we have a second by Alderman Anthony. Any further discussion on any of these three? Hearing none, roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Seibert, we go back to eleven B three.
Thank you for the promotion, but I'm Consilla's son. Seibert is the senior.
He's got a little, you got a little bit more hair.
Eleven B three, motion to approve a development agreement with Alan Leving for the construction of a new financial services facility located at forty-five twenty-nine West Main Street.
Second. So we have a motion, and we have a second by Alderman Randall to approve that coming from Economic Development. I open it for questions. Yes, sir?
Okay, see, could I get a, I have a series of questions. The name of the proposed business? Is it right? Instead of a financial services facility?
Anissa, do we, Eric, you have it?
There will be two, two businesses within the property. One is the existing title loan company, and there will be a currency exchange that will also occupy the premises that will have, that will be able to check cashing or several other types of financial services.
Okay, and I understand that neither one of these will produce any sales tax, correct?
Correct.
All right. With the, with the thought of a, you know, I'm sorry, my opinion of the title max is a predatory lending place, and when we are asked to, to, for the request of submitting public funds for this development, I have some reservations about that. I would, I would, is there anybody representing the title loan?
Mr. Leving is here.
All right. I know it's probably none of our business, but you, could you supply information about whether yes or no, your business has made any donations, contributions to many civic organizations throughout two thousand and fifteen?
Yes, I make contributions every year. I have similar businesses on the other side of the river. I donate what I believe to be generously to senior citizens. I've provided, on one occasion, ten thousand dollars for senior citizens' Christmas party and dinner. One evening, the very next evening, the party was for the children. There have been many other donations in that regard.
Okay, thank you, sir.
But I like to, I like to say one thing. I don't do title loans. They're installment loans.
Other questions? Yes?
On the site, I noticed that there's two PVC pipes coming out at the front of, front of the property. It's my understanding that there might be...
Storage tanks.
Storage tanks underneath there. Has there been any EPA studies, or has that been closed out? Has it been, the site been cleared by the EPA?
Yes, there are, there are tanks there. I have, we've had some studies done, and the tanks are to be filled with slurry. The liquid in there now is mostly water at this point, and that's to be taken out, filled with slurry, and the tanks would be there, would remain there.
Okay, and you're gonna cover that cost, or?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And this has been in connection with the EPA?
Well, we're not, we're not there with the environmental company I'm dealing with.
The one that you chose?
Yes.
Okay.
And they, they believe there'll be a clean letter delivered.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions? Yes?
It lists here that the projected property tax is, the property tax is projected to be, I just lost my place, I believe it was sixty-nine, here it is, sixty-nine twenty-three annually. Is that what the projected property tax would be, and so then we would be abating fifty percent of that, or is that the fifty percent paid here?
That's the fifty percent.
That's the fifty percent.
So the taxes are estimated to go up to about seventeen thousand.
Yeah. Seventeen-five, and so then that would place the amount at approximately twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Okay.
Okay, any other questions? I would just say that when staff, when we reviewed it and looked at it, we were looking at the property and the area, and we felt that the tear down and rebuild on that location would continue to help when you look at what's been done recently by forty-two oh four and some of the other remodels that we've seen. We felt it continued to make a trend of improvements along that corridor, and we saw that to be reason to bring this forward and move it to committee. Yes, sir?
Eric, I believe you had stated in prior meetings and then earlier tonight that the only TIF-eligible funds that are being expended here are for the sidewalk and the driveway open on West Main Street, which is included in the TIF district, correct?
That's correct, and they'll be taking part in the fifty-fifty program.
Okay.
Right.
So there is no TIF money being expended, okay, in terms of the construction, the destruction, and the, you know, building of the new facilities?
Right, it's just the sidewalk and the driveway.
Yes, sir.
We brought this up before, Eric, and I just wanna go ahead, and this is one of the problems that I have, is the parking. I hope that there's adequate parking, there's twelve spots, but I hope that's adequate for both operations. And you feel comfortable with that, am I correct? Mr. Leving?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes, I mean, it'll, you know, when they get their building permit, it'll have to go through all the site plan process and everything, so, you know, the, if there are more spots required, you know, that's something we'll address at that time, but as of this point, it appears to be adequate, and that meets our code.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no more questions, we do, refresh me. Do we have a motion in a second?
Yes, sir.
We had a motion in a second to approve this request coming from Economic Development, and at this time, if there's nothing further, I'd ask for a roll call.
Hazel.
No.
Consilla.
Yes.
Pusa.
Yes.
Bittner.
Yes.
Randall.
Yes.
Tyler.
No.
Anthony.
Yes.
Ovian.
Yes.
Silsby.
Yes.
Diddleman.
Yes.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Silsby, Alderman Silsby's got a pretty good list coming from finance. Are there any of those you want pulled out, or how many of those can you do in one?
Read them as a group.
Read them as a group?
Read second.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Proceed.
On behalf of the Finance Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve the low bid of thirteen thousand six seventy-one eighty-nine from Take Farm for Interior Signage for the Public Building Improvement Projects. Motion to approve the low bid of twenty thousand two ninety-two from Demand Signs Incorporated for Exterior Signage for the Public Building Improvements Project. Motion to approve adding clerk's office printer to Watts Equipment Rental Agreement for remainder of term of the contract. Motion to approve new fire department safety construction permit fee schedule. Motion to approve offering fire dispatch services at equivalent cost charged by CENTCOM. Motion to approve closing the two thousand fourteen construction fund and bank account. Motion to approve using EMAX LLC to perform reverse auctions for the city's electric and gas utility accounts. And motion to approve the budget amendment as recommended by the Finance Director. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Silsby, second by Alderman Seibert. I just wanted to reiterate that the top two, in case the public's wondering, where it says "public building improvements," these are both at our new police station at seven twenty West Main. Any further questions? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Motion to approve new fire department safety construction permit fee schedule. Motion to approve offering fire dispatch services at equivalent cost charged by Sincom. Motion to approve closing the two thousand fourteen construction fund and bank account. Motion to approve using Emex LLC to perform reverse auctions for the city's electric and gas utility accounts. And motion to approve the budget amendment as recommended by the Finance Director, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Seibert. I just wanted to reiterate that the top two, in case the public's wondering, where it says Public Building Improvements, these are both at our new police station at seven-twenty West Main. Any further questions? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. We move on to Streets and Grades, Alderman Seibert, you've got a pretty good list.
Yeah, we had, uh, uh, the Streets and Grades unanimously approved, all of these, I'd like to read them in one.
No objection?
Second.
Okay, we move, move forward as a group.
Great, uh, number one, the infrastructure ditching program, for a forty, an amount of eighty-four thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars for the twenty-sixteen ditching program. Twenty-sixteen sidewalk program, approval of ANX, an amount of two hundred and thirty-three thousand seven twenty-three fifty for the twenty-sixteen sidewalk program. General maintenance for culverts. Consider approval of metal culverts, an amount of nine thousand five hundred and four dollars, general maintenance culverts. General maintenance aggregate, consider approval of MAJ, an amount of thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. General maintenance asphalt, approval of McLaren, an amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred dollars for general maintenance. General maintenance salt, the approval of Morton's Salt, an amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars for general maintenance. Surveying services, approval of Coolman Design Group to perform various surveying services, an amount of thirty-five thousand. Rideaway vacation at Union and Huff, consider approval of rideaway vacation requests at Union Avenue and Huff. EOC parking lot, consider approval of Reuters, an amount of sixty-one thousand four hundred and sixty dollars and five cents. And Dutch Auto Bridge, consider approval of both associates, an amount of seventy-two thousand to perform phase-two engineering services. So moved, Your Honor.
With motion by Alderman Seibert, do I hear a second? We have a second by Alderman Wiggington, have a comment from the city engineer before we move forward.
The rideaway vacation was not on the council agenda, so if that could be scratched, that was.
Yeah, that one, I was just gonna say, that one has to, I mentioned it, that has to be held to June sixth.
Okay, yeah, right.
Uh, that'll be six, six of sixteen. So all the other ones were read, anything else? Hearing no other questions, roll call on these items coming from Streets and Grades.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Traffic Committee. Yes, sir, Mr. White?
Yes, sir, thank you, Your Honor. On behalf of the Traffic Committee, I'd like to make the following two motions, you want me to do them together?
I think we can.
Okay. First motion is to make, is to create a faraway stop at North Seventieth and West Eighth Street, including a no parking, here to corner thirty feet sign, they have a proper ordinance drawn. And the second one is no parking on South Eighth Street, east side, from West Main to the end of the police station property, and also have a proper ordinance drawn, so moved.
Motion by Alderman White, second by Alderman Pusa. Uh, that second one, we just noticed that, I thought maybe it was there before, and the signs got taken down in construction, but that, we just, we don't want the, we want a fire lane alongside the Police Department building as well, so that's where that's at. We have a motion, we have a second to approve these two ordinance recommendations coming from traffic, and have the proper ordinances drawn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We go on to Police and Fire. I'd ask for a motion, uh, to approve a new construction permit for the Fire Department.
So moved.
Uh, motion by Alderman Anthony, second by Alderman Hazel, discussion, roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Abstain.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. This time I have, uh, two motions coming from the administration, if I can read them as a group, they both pertain to the movement of the, of activity with the building of the police station. The first motion I'd like to ask to be approved would be, uh, a ribbon, approve a ribbon cutting and open house on Saturday, June twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, for the new city of Belleville Police Station, located at seven-twenty West Main Street. The ribbon cutting would be at ten AM, and the open house would be from, soon as the ribbon cutting's over, until four PM approximately. Uh, we're gonna have tours by the Police Department going through that all day to see the new facilities. The next part of that motion would be a motion to approve the following plans for temporary relocation of administration offices and meetings pending City Hall renovations through January two thousand seventeen. The Economic Development and Planning Zoning Office will move to four oh seven East Lincoln beginning June sixth, two thousand sixteen. The city clerk and treasurer, uh, moving to five twelve West Main beginning Monday, June twentieth, uh, June sixteenth, and they, we note that they'll be limited to, very limited services that day, we're gonna try to get that advertised and explained, but we will be open the next day at five twelve West Main Street, uh, we feel like we'll be ready, open for five, for full operation. Uh, if someone had an emergency that day, there's gonna still be on the twentieth, there's gonna be staff here that we could, you know, I'm sure, talk to them and try to help them in some way. Uh, and then, uh, by the June twentieth, I'm sorry, by Mayor's Office and Finance and Marketing and Website, will move to seven-twenty West Main beginning June twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen. Do I hear motion to approve these two requests? Motion by Alderman Tyler, second by Alderman Hazel. We had approved this second part before, but we didn't have the timeline of when they were actually start to go. Now we will start to get the word out, uh, whether by sewer bill, our website, the newspaper, and we'll start to also have our staff contact a lot of their various people they work with and explain to them that this move now is locked in, because we talked, Kenny and I talked with the, um, Impact Strategies, uh, as recently again as last Friday, and they confirmed that they're definitely on with this, with this schedule. They wanna get City Hall emptied, so we can, they can begin the abatement of asbestos as soon as possible. So we have a motion and we have a second, if there, is there any further questions? Uh, if there's no further questions, let me just say this, I know Mr. Betts and I've had many conversations, and I will assure you, Mr. Betts, we are gonna call people in, probably starting next week, Kenny, to show them the updated final plans of City Hall, and you and some of your associates from, will be certainly be welcome. Uh, we are gonna do, they, they have, we're gonna, to show you how frugal and how much we respect Charles King, we're keeping these chairs, we're gonna reupholster them. Uh, we're gonna, the furniture that's in the lobby is, is being kept. Uh, the wood back here is being kept. As you can see, the ceiling tiles are falling out and they're full of asbestos, they're not being kept. The tile floor is going. Uh, you came to me about the benches, um, what the compromise we're gonna propose, because you're gonna see in the few days ahead, all of you, it's kind of almost a little bit of curvature in the seating, this wall gets taken out, the council chamber gets made bi- bigger, 'cause after sixty years, we'd be silly not to make it a little bit larger when you see the crowds that come some nights. There's gonna be a balcony, a mezzanine put upstairs, because when the Police Department leaves, the, some of those old detective offices will come out. I'm proposing now that we take several of the benches upstairs and keep several of them, uh, in that area, but the seating here is gonna have more of a curvature, and, and we're going to, you'll see the design coming up real soon. Um, and, and like I said, there will be an emergency door exit put up here for safety, ever since we witnessed the horrible events of Kirkwood years ago, we've been wanting to do some of these, uh, safety things in here ever since. There will be some ballistic coverings put in certain places, there will be a metal detector. This set of doors here, we're gonna do our best to move it out to where the opening will be, but there's gonna be a metal detector incorporated. Uh, let's face it, unfortunately, uh, violence does show up at some public places throughout the country, and we'd be silly not to make some safety provisions. So that in a nutshell, this up here staying, these lights are staying. So it's not that I haven't been listening, Mr. Betts, uh, we've been listening very carefully, but we also, the title building, after talking to many people, the title building must come down, or we cannot make City Hall ADA compliant. And we must, our City Hall will be in big trouble with the federal government, and, and that's the bottom line. It was never, beautiful building in nineteen fifty-seven, but it was never ADA compliant. Handicap people have struggled getting into this building for sixty years now, and we must make those changes. All the bathrooms will be made handicap acceptable, or accessible, new bathrooms right behind where the police station is, a new elevator, which that one is shot, if you, I've been stuck in it before, uh, and another new elevator will be roughed in, so when we find the money to finish renovating the police station side, for bringing some offices back here, we'll be a little farther along and save us some money in the long run. So that's kind of the, there's gonna be some, some modest changes in the front, also some ADA improvements, but I think everybody will like the final designs, and, uh, you will be seeing them very soon, the architect, Kenny and I and Impact have been pushing them, and just last week or so, we finally got down to what we think are, they're tweaking a few things, we're gonna meet with staff in next couple of days ahead, we'll be calling the aldermen in to take a peek and talk to the architect. I certainly will call some of the folks from historic preserv- uh, story, our historical groups to come take a peek. I think you're gonna be pleased, we have been listening. Okay, with all that said, I just felt I owed that explanation, uh, we have a motion and we have a second to approve those recommendations of timing and changes in open houses. If there's, uh, no further questions, I'd ask for a roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Sillsby, Alderman Sillsby's got a pretty good list coming from finance, are there any of those you want pulled out, or how many of those can you do in one, uh?
Read them as a group.
Read them as a group?
Read second.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Proceed.
On behalf of the Finance Committee, I'd like to make the following two motions, you want me to do them together?
I think we can.
Okay. First motion is to make, is to create a faraway stop at North Seventieth and West Eighth Street, including a no parking, here to corner thirty feet sign, they have a proper ordinance drawn. And the second one is no parking on South Eighth Street, east side, from West Main to the end of the police station property, and also have a proper ordinance drawn, so moved.
Motion by Alderman White, second by Alderman Pusa. Uh, that second one, we just noticed that, uh, I thought maybe it was there before, and the signs got taken down in construction, but that, we just, we don't want the, we want a fire lane alongside the Police Department building as well, so that's where that's at. We have a motion, we have a second to approve these two ordinance recommendations coming from traffic, and have the proper ordinances drawn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We go on to Police and Fire. I'd ask for a motion, uh, to approve a new construction permit for the Fire Department.
So moved.
Uh, motion by Alderman Anthony, second by Alderman Hazel, discussion, roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. We move on to Streets and Grades, Alderman Seibert, you've got a pretty good list coming from, uh, we have a second by Alderman Wiggington, have a comment from the city engineer before we move forward.
Yeah, twelve B communication from Robert C. Howard, conductor Belleville Philharmonic Orchestra, and chorale, requesting Belleville Homecoming March, composed for the Belleville Centennial by Frank Mack.
Mackey.
Mackey, in nineteen fifteen, orchestrated by Mr. Howard, for the Belleville Bicentennial in two thousand fifteen, recognized as the official march for the city of Belleville.
Mr., uh, Mr. Mackey, well, Kathy Lydie is the granddaughter of Mr. Mackey, she's here tonight in the back of the room, and, uh, her grandfather wrote this for the, for the nineteen fourteen bicentennial. And, uh, Mr. Howard came to me and talked about how we might adopt this march, uh, for the bicentennial originally, and then we talked about, and it was played then, it was played the other day, Sunday, I got to hear it, and they had a nice crowd under the tent at Orderne Square, and the, uh, our, our Philharmonic played it again Sunday, and what we're asking you, we're gonna play, uh, the, the march real quick, it's not all that long, and then we're gonna ask you for your consideration to adopt this as the Belleville March. Two other quick things before I have Rich turn it on. One, you all know, or you probably know, our Philharmonic is the second oldest continuous Philharmonic in the nation. Secondly, this year, we are, they are celebrating their hundred and fiftieth year, tremendous. Mr. Howard has been conducting for twenty years and has just announced his retirement, but is seeing, uh, seeing through many of these activities this year of celebration, so, uh, this is a, this is an awesome, the, uh, the, the history that goes with, uh, our Philharmonic. So, Rich, you wanna turn it on? Okay. Yes, sir.
You ready for a motion?
What's that?
You ready for a motion?
We're ready for a motion to approve, uh, these, this recommendation coming, uh, from, uh, Robert Howard and the Philharmonic.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Howard lives in our ward, and he's a great neighbor, and I'd like to add to the motion, congratulations on his retirement, and I know him and Robin will enjoy it, and I'll make the motion that what we just heard be recognized as the official And I'll make the motion that what we just heard be recognized as the official march for the city of Belleville.
Motion by Alderman Elmore, second by Alderman Galetti, to approve this request to have Frank Mackey's march that was presented in 1915 to be the official Belleville March. We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions? I'm going to call for a roll call, so your names go down approving this. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
See, I told you Sunday, I thought it'd be unanimous. Thank you, all of you. Mr. Howard?
I'd like to express my gratitude to Mrs. Lydi, to the council for approving this, and for the entire community for the support of the Belleville Philharmonic all the time that I've been privileged to be its director. And I have two scores that I'd like to offer to the city that this march is being offered without any expectation of compensation to either Mrs. Lydi or myself to be used as the city sees fit. May I present these to you?
We kindly accept and we appreciate it. If you want to, we'll hang on to them, and we'll get them properly filed or hung on to so that we got that in our history archives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I bring them?
Yes, yes, by all means. Okay. Well, that was one of the more interesting communications in a while. Petitions, we have non-resolutions. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, Resolution 3266. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Cincilla. All in favor of reading 3266 by title only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
14A Resolution 3266, a resolution amending the annual budget of the city of Belleville, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May 2016 and ending on 30th day of April 2017.
Motion to approve Resolution 3266.
Motion by Sillsby, second by Cincilla. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, ordinance 7951, 7952, 7953, 7954.
And as a group?
And as a group. Motion by Alderman Sillsby to read those as by title only and as a group. Any problems with that? Alderman, you okay?
Oh, it's going to be the second.
Oh, okay, we have a motion, and we have a second by Alderman Galetti. He had his finger up first. If there's no further discussion, roll call.
Hazel.
Hold it, we've got to read them first of all. All in favor to read by title only as a group, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. The march kind of got me thrown off.
15A Ordinance 7951, a 2016 ordinance amending Chapter III of City Administration of the Revised Code of Ordinances of Belleville, Illinois is amended. 15B Ordinance 7952, a 2016 ordinance approving zoning ordinance in regard to Case 14, April 16, Todd Kennedy. 15C Ordinance 7953, a 2016 ordinance approving zoning ordinance in regard to Case 16 of April 16, Jeff Hamel. 15D Ordinance 7954, 2016 ordinance approving zoning ordinance in regard to Case 17, April 16, Marvin and Alvina Pruitt.
Motion to approve Ordinance 7951, 52, 53, and 54, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Cybert. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
See, I told you Sunday, I thought it'd be unanimous. Thank you, all of you. Mr. Howard?
I'd like to express my gratitude to Mrs. Lydi, to the council for approving this, and for the entire community for the support of the Belleville Philharmonic all the time that I've been privileged to be its director. And I have two scores that I'd like to offer to the city that this march is being offered without any expectation of compensation to either Mrs. Lydi or myself to be used as the city sees fit. May I present these to you?
We kindly accept and we appreciate it. If you want to, we'll hang on to them, and we'll get them properly filed or hung on to so that we got that in our history archives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I bring them?
Yes, yes, by all means. Okay. Well, that was one of the more interesting communications in a while. Petitions, we have non-resolutions. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, Resolution 3266. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Cincilla. All in favor of reading 3266 by title only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
14A Resolution 3266, a resolution amending the annual budget of the city of Belleville, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May 2016 and ending on 30th day of April 2017.
Motion to approve Resolution 3266.
Motion by Sillsby, second by Cincilla. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session to deal with pending litigation and semi-annual review of executive session minutes. And you can see the section's numbers that Garrett has there that provides the rationale for what we're doing there, and I'm not going to read all those numbers. So we have a motion, a second to go into executive session. Tyler, and a second by White. All in favor of going into executive session for the above stated reasons, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We do have a possible settlement agreement and a possible motion to release some executive session minutes when we come back. So please excuse us. Thank you, Kathy Lydi and Mr. Howard. We appreciate it. We are back in open session. We have two items of business to take care of. I would first ask for a motion to approve a settlement of a matter of Binker versus City of Belleville, St. Clair County Circuit Court, case number 16-SC-435, in the amount of $1,200. Do I hear a motion by Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Elmore? Discussion on that? Further discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
See, I told you Sunday, I thought it'd be unanimous. Thank you, all of you. Mr. Howard?
I'd like to express my gratitude to Mrs. Lydi, to the council for approving this, and for the entire community for the support of the Belleville Philharmonic all the time that I've been privileged to be its director. And I have two scores that I'd like to offer to the city that this march is being offered without any expectation of compensation to either Mrs. Lydi or myself to be used as the city sees fit. May I present these to you?
We kindly accept and we appreciate it. If you want to, we'll hang on to them, and we'll get them properly filed or hung on to so that we got that in our history archives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I bring them?
Yes, yes, by all means. Okay. Well, that was one of the more interesting communications in a while. Petitions, we have non-resolutions. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, Resolution 3266. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Cincilla. All in favor of reading 3266 by title only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
14A Resolution 3266, a resolution amending the annual budget of the city of Belleville, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of May 2016 and ending on 30th day of April 2017.
Motion to approve Resolution 3266.
Motion by Sillsby, second by Cincilla. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session to deal with pending litigation and semi-annual review of executive session minutes. And you can see the section's numbers that Garrett has there that provides the rationale for what we're doing there, and I'm not going to read all those numbers. So we have a motion, a second to go into executive session. Tyler, and a second by White. All in favor of going into executive session for the above stated reasons, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We do have a possible settlement agreement and a possible motion to release some executive session minutes when we come back. So please excuse us. Thank you, Kathy Lydi and Mr. Howard. We appreciate it. We have two items of business to take care of. I would first ask for a motion to approve a settlement of a matter of Binker versus City of Belleville, St. Clair County Circuit Court, case number 16-SC-435, in the amount of $1,200. Do I hear a motion by Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Elmore? Discussion on that? Further discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next one, I'd ask for a motion to release executive session minutes for the following city council meetings. And as I stated to all of you, you'll get this in your minutes, but I'll give the dates, type them up for... The following minutes were asking to be released.